For over forty years, SEM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
SEM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings.
And celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SEM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SEM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SEM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth and keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SEM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SEM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SEM isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us. Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that SEM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution.
Counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government. Come together.
December sixteenth meeting in the Simsbury zoning commission. And we're starting with the issue of tenants. And I think. Yeah? So, thank you all for making it tonight. And to the public for doing this. First order of business is approval of the minutes of our December second meeting. I have one comment that I'll start with. And that on line seventy-one, a member of the public, Jay Dixon, his street isn't quite right. Noted here as Walker Grove. But that change from Grove to Drive is the only thing I have to add. So, does anybody else want to make additions, corrections, comments on the December second minutes? Going once, going two, anybody else? How about a motion to approve as they were submitted with that one change on line seventy-one?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approved the minutes from the December second meeting as amended.
Second.
And, was that you, Kate?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, second. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the minutes are adopted with the one correction. And. Our next item of business is to take up again the, we're actually continuing the public hearing that we started on December twelfth. Related to the zoning commission, application twenty-four oh six. It's Housing Strategies Toolkit. And we're going to start with George McGregor, who's the town planner, right over there. George is going to present, once again, a summary outline of the key elements of the Housing Strategy Toolkit. And we just want to make sure everybody has at least a basic familiarity with what we're dealing with. So, our initiative here is really about these four specific areas of the zoning regulations. George, do you want to go over there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, let me just make two comments before I get up to the podium. You have, you have in front of you, for the record, two sets of written comments from two citizens. So, they've been sent through email as well as provided in front of you. You definitely have is from Diane Nash dated today, December sixteen. And as well as some comments from Paul Henall dated December sixteenth as well. So, make those part of the public record. So, I'm going to go through, I'll just go through the presentation. We've got almost all the people here today, which is great. So, ZC twenty-four oh six is a Housing Strategies text amendment. That really incorporates four different strategies. Aims at improving housing opportunity and diversity of, you know, of economics and architecture and lot size. All based in really what come out of your plan of conservation and development. And the fundamental policies that are ingrained in how we deal with housing policy. But specifically, they're going to relate to a topic called inclusionary zoning. That is, when we require affordable units as part of a development project. A process change recommended as part of your accessory dwelling unit review process. The introduction of a new standard small lot, R-eight zone. And then revisions to what we have called, what I would say is our most flexible zoning category. The workforce housing overlay zone, there's several changes related to that. So, let's make sure I frame the, you know, why are we doing this? That's, I mean, that's an important, important question to answer. So, as part of our plan of conservation and development, we know that what we call the P O C D. That is our kind of aspirational policy document. It is a guiding policy document, but the items in there are not regulations. They're ideas and aspirations that we want to kind of meet as a community. And the P O C D, over a number of years, have, has detailed overarching policy related to housing. We have, we have a newly adopted P O C D from twenty-twenty-four. But much of these goals, at least the sense and the notionality of improving housing availability in our community, can be found in the twenty-seventeen plan as well as the twenty-ten plan. So, I wanted to make sure that I pulled out what I think is the overarching policy commitment in our adopted plan. And that's to provide for a range of housing choices for people of all ages and economic circumstances. While respecting the safe, helpful, aesthetic, and distinctive living environment in Simsbury. So, it's trying to strike a balance, if you think about it. The strategies, two of the primary strategies. One, to increase the number of affordable housing units in Simsbury. The adopted P O C D makes that a priority for the community. And we also want to seek ways to help meet the diverse housing needs of present and future residents. The P O C D recognizes that due to an aging population and changing housing preferences and other factors, single-family homes do not always meet everyone's housing needs. P O C D recognizes that there is an interest and a need, more housing options and more choices. And including housing that is affordable. And that's referenced in page ninety-eight of your P O C D. So, that's kind of how we got here. These are, these are action strategies that this commission chose to take up into review. Not as a full commitment of adoption, but as consideration of trying to implement some sort of housing policy. Implement the housing strategies in your zoning regulations, because that's the place to do it. All right, so let's briefly go through the toolkit. So, relative to accessory dwelling units. So, these are either the small secondary units, usually less than a thousand square feet that are permitted today in our community. We permit them, we permit attached units by zoning commission review without a public hearing. We approve, we permit a detached unit as, as part of a public hearing process and a special exception process. This draft would revise that regulation to allow all accessory dwelling units as a by right matter. And if they meet the zoning requirements, they get a zoning permit, just like a regular house does under our zoning regulations. So, it's an attempt to remove the process barriers. Inclusionary zoning, what we call housing set-asides are, again, to be as simple as possible. A requirement that any development provide affordable dwelling units or affordable homes as part of any development. As currently drafted, the draft would require fifteen percent of homes in any project over ten units to be affordable. Half at sixty percent of area median income and half of the fifteen percent at eighty percent of area median income. There is no language for a buyout or a fee in lieu of. And that we would try to follow the housing guidelines for the eight thirty G under the state code. And that simply means a requirement of a deed restriction for forty years, a housing affordability plan, those kinds of things. The housing strategies also introduce a standard R-eight zone. And the reason we're doing this is, and I think you've heard in a number of public hearings you've had over the last year, we have heard from citizens asking, you know, are there small lots? How does a first-time homebuyer get into the Simsbury marketplace? So, it's really the reason we're doing this, or recommending it at least. So, it's an opportunity for first-time homebuyer, lower price points, different architectural style, for a minimum standard R-eight zone. That means parcels would have to have a minimum of eight thousand square foot lot. If you think about how we do it today, our smallest lot is a fifteen thousand square foot lot today in Simsbury. This zone, as drafted, would also allow, as a matter of right, two-family homes and single-family homes to be permitted in that R-eight district. So, this is the first time we've introduced this idea of something more than a single-family home in our residential zones. And just an example of what a two-family unit can look like. And then for the workforce housing overlay, which again is our most flexible zone. It allows, it allows a mix of residential uses that really at any density. It's only been tried once in our community. So, we're recommending a name change. I mean, it's not just for, you know, just for the workforce anymore. It's, you know, housing for aging adults or younger folks. So, it doesn't need to be called workforce. And then really the three primary changes that you can see in blue. Remove, what I think is a very difficult-to-understand design section. We have, we have design regulations townwide. We have a design review board that reviews them and makes recommendations on them. So, I don't think there's any reason for an additional sign section in your zoning regulations. We recommend removing the hard and fast restriction of having this kind of use within seven hundred and fifty feet of Hot Meadow Street. There may be opportunities just beyond, I think, the seven hundred and fifty probably. And it could be, we could be a little bit more flexible on that. And again, we would also recommend removing what is now a twenty percent affordable requirement and replace it with whatever affordable requirement that this body ends up adopting or not adopting. The process doesn't change for this flexible design overlay. It's really a two-part application process. It requires a zone change application, which has a public hearing. And it also requires a special exception and site plan application, which again, comes with a second public hearing. So, I just wanted to let the commission know, and again, I don't know that we want to get into this now. I think you want to, you want to be able to hear from your citizen, the public. But I did provide you also in your Dropbox and on public site, two additional memorandums. To kind of walk through what your options could be if the draft isn't, and doesn't kind of meet what we have heard from citizenry as well as kind of what you're thinking. So, got some options on how to deal with the A D U issue. Again, I really think it's fairly, it's fairly simple in terms of your decision-making process. Either change the process because it implements the P O C D or don't change it because you think an A D U rises to the need for a special exception review. We can get into this in more of a work session, but kind of walk you through in the draft memorandum, how we go about doing our measurements to get to thirty percent for an A D U. And we like to say that the current language is gross floor area. Problem we see that is we don't have a definition of gross floor area in your zoning regulations. So, that's why we're proposing to use gross building area, which we do have a definition for. And I think we're happy to kind of work through, I'm not sure how strongly staff feels about what you include and what you don't include. We just want to be on the same page with the commission in terms of how we come about doing that math. And then finally, for the inclusionary zoning options, you obviously, you got some very good testimony from the public last week. And I think even in previous staff memorandum, we identified some of the challenges associated with an inclusionary requirement, especially as it relates to the single-family marketplace. We understand it's difficult and we understand it's challenging. So, again, once you get towards your, you know, work session and move past the public hearing process, you're going to have some options and they may be, they may be variations of just a couple of the options that I made out in the memo. Obviously, you can keep it as drafted. You can consider reduction to the percentage, to ten percent or even below that. You keep the percentage requirement at eighty percent of A M I and not include sixty. Obviously, that makes it easier for developers to provide. Eliminate the single-family requirement. And I think that is a good place to start. I mean, we built eight single-family this year. We built eight single-family units last year in the Simsbury. You're just not going to get banged for your buck on, on single-family applications. Concentrate any inclusionary requirement on the multifamily marketplace. I think that may be a very good starting point. Again, I think there are two primary incentives that this body considers. We talked about incentives that are important to the development community like tax abatements or tax incentives. That's obviously not something that this body, you can recommend it to your board of selectmen, but we don't have the ability to control that in our zoning regs. But you do have the ability to reduce costs for developers by considering parking reductions as well as density bonuses. The only place we do have density requirements is in your, in the new overlay zone or the, you know, the previous workforce housing. But you could deal with density bonuses in that location. So, I'm going to be quiet and let your citizens speak. And I can answer questions perhaps at the end.
Okay. We're going to move on to public input at this point. I just want to remind everyone that everyone who's here and wants to speak is going to get a chance to speak. If you could stay focused on the four elements of the toolkit, that's what we're here to talk about. You might have a lot to say or thoughts about other aspects of life in Simsbury, but that's what we're here for today. So, if you could stick to that area of concern. And try to sort of keep your voice elevated, but speakers need to go to the podium. You can't see it, but there's a sound system that picks up speech from right over there. So, you need to stand behind the podium and start with your name and your address. Whether you're for or against, doesn't matter, you can still get a chance to speak. And I, we don't have strict timelines, but if you could sort of move it along. Because there's somebody else and others that want to speak too. So, we didn't do a sign-up sheet, we're going to do this informally. So, if, well, why don't we start with whoever's closest to me?
Your attorneys, Dennis Ofters.
Okay, fine. Start again with your name and your address, please.
Good evening, my name is Mary Turner, eleven Barnard Drive, Simsbury. Fifty years here. We moved here because of the way Simsbury is and the school system. We've been very happy. My question is, one, why have four proposals all in one and not separated? Each different proposal should appear in its own setting and separately considered on its merits by the zoning commissioner. Just a statement. Our current accessory dwelling unit rules state that units cannot have separate utilities and the resident of the unit must be associated with or relatives of the owner. This rule ensures that the exercise of responsibility for the property care carefully watched over by extended family members was neglect easily addressed as needed. Changing those rules will allow reversal of those positive guarantees. It was mentioned at the December second meeting by one of our board members that he felt he had a mandate to increase the Simsbury population. To whose benefit? The developer? In the same vein, I believe a majority of our residents feel a mandate to preserve the livability of Simsbury as so well demonstrated by the recent referendum rejection of marijuana sales in town. The emphasis on walking, hiking, and biking, the support of open space, hunting space, and our beautiful canoeable Farmington River, the preservation of farmland, such as the huge public donations raised for the Teller Farm preservation effort and the strong love of Vista from Hubeline Tower that we all so enjoy. With an uncontrolled population increase comes an increase in expenses. I'm a business person, profit, loss. The cost, the expenses. Cost of public works for carrying greatly congested roadways. Cost of much increased ambulance services. Cost of fire department services, same as police services. Schools and social services. These expenses far outweigh the revenue that is proposed. As a result, there will be the need for sustainable increases in town property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. I should have mentioned this, for people who haven't been to the zoning commission public hearing before, these are not opportunities to engage in discussion with the zoning commission. We're here for hearing the public is what we're trying to do. So, don't be surprised as Mary raises some questions for us to give consideration to. We will. But we're not going to do that back and forth here tonight. Those points will come up in discussions. Joan?
Thank you. Joan Cole, twenty-six Wickham Drive. Affordable housing should be determined by market rates, not through do-good, social engineering that has not been successful in the past. Hundred eighty acres of land was donated to the town through the Eno Trust for the poor of Simsbury has had a history of chaotic management in the Eno Farms affordable housing that has to the present not served low, very low-income families and is in violation of the trust. The next attempt at affordable housing was developing an age-restricted community on Noel Lane. The failure was realized when the resale of the homes was not attainable, resulting in removing the restrictions. Owners of homes developed with a percent of restricted affordable homes realized that they could not sell their property with the affordable restrictions. Banks would not give mortgages to the prospective buyers since the financial risk was evident. The homeowners came before the Board of Selectmen to lift the restrictions to their homes and the board lifted the restrictions. Simsbury has many homes with varying price from low to high. Changing zoning requirements to meet the subjective need for affordable housing and increase in the population will have unintended consequences. Simsbury does not have an infrastructure for an increase in population causing traffic issues. Simsbury does not have reliable public transportation, making commuting expensive. Taxes are the highest in the valley, adding to the cost of living in Simsbury. Reducing taxes and an increase in economic development would make Simsbury more affordable. The marketplace should create a housing market, not experimentation by regulating the housing market through social engineering. The past experiments of adding affordable housing with caveats have been a dismal failure. Manipulation of lands to serve a perceived problem in housing is like trying to place a square peg in a round hole to get an acceptable outcome. Tiny houses on tiny lots are not a solution to affordable housing. It is a nightmare to the landscape in Simsbury. The zoning commission should reject CZ twenty-four oh six Housing Strategies Toolkit and leave the regulations as written. All of my comments, we posted on Simsbury Pat and Twitter at Joan Cole for your review. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Is there somebody over here?
It'll take me a minute, sorry. Should have tripped on the wires. Chris Barnett, fifteen Ock joke drive. I spoke at the last meeting. I'm not going to go through all the points I made last time, but I have elaborated on some of them. It was McCain, sorry. I have a printout of my comments that I'm going to give George. If, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to distribute them to you or not. So, this is a full copy. I just want to make note for record that I am in favor of affordable housing and diverse housing options here in Simsbury. There's nothing in the state statute that is forcing you to make such major changes to our community with our zoning regulations right now. This discussion should be continued into the new year with additional public hearings outside of the holiday season. There should be nothing more important than getting the same amount of input and feedback as you solicited for the P O C D, to protect the residents and develop a sound, thoughtful, and well-executed plan for growth in our community. Each member of the zoning commission, including the alternates, are elected by the voters of Simsbury. Doesn't matter how many votes you receive during the election or what party you're affiliated with. Each of you has a fiduciary responsibility to serve the residents that elected you and entrusted you to protect their interests along with the towns. You are not charged with protecting people who live outside of our community or developers looking to locate their business or housing development here. Each of you, whether you choose to move to Simsbury or remain in Simsbury as a cherished place you grew up in, appreciate the character and amenities Simsbury offers. To selectively choose several of the points made in the P O C, which had a tremendous amount of input from residents, which furthers a narrow agenda and ignores some of the most important points made is negligent. Please note the single most important item raised by the community was preservation of open space. Another item to note is that community character and housing affordability were equal. As a reminder, there are overarching goals that came out of the P O C D process. One was to maintain and enhance the overall ambiance of Simsbury by preserving and protecting the characteristics that continue to its overall ambiance and quality of life. A second one was to guide future growth or change in Simsbury in ways that will promote places with a sense of place, strengthen Simsbury Center and other village centers in unique places and maintain and enhance the ambiance of our community. The third was to provide a range of housing choices for people of all ages and economic circumstances while representing, respecting the safe, healthful, and aesthetic and distinctive living environment of Simsbury. There are additional points I want to expand upon that I mentioned at the public hearing on the second. Regarding accessory dwelling units, when each of us purchase our homes, the following applies. There's an implied covenant. Most jurisdictions consider the right to quiet enjoyment as an implied term in any property sale, meaning it is assumed to be part of an agreement, even if not specifically mentioned. The meaning is that it essentially means that you can use your property peacefully without undue disturbances from neighbors, the previous owner, or other parties. I feel very strongly that the detached A D U should not be allowed just anywhere in town and should still go in front of the zoning commission for approvals, so neighbors can provide input at a public hearing. If an A D U is approved by special exception, then short-term rental regulations need to apply to those units. If an R-eight zone is adopted, which I am in favor of, it needs to be, there needs to be limitations to where this can be applied. This should not be used on existing, this should be used only on existing vacant properties or redeveloped properties and should not be used in existing residential neighborhoods where homes already exist. Regarding the workforce housing overlay, at the last meeting, there was mentioned that we should just try to fix some of the errors, the problems in that zone. Instead of trying to fix a zone that has so many inherent flaws, why not start from scratch and create a zone that actually works for the town, the developers, and those eventually affected by these guidelines? I've provided an example of the affordability piece of. I've provided an example of the affordability piece of it. I know I spoke last time about how the numbers don't work, and I wanted to show you an example of how the calculation is done for income eligibility. It's included in the remarks I've given George. And I would be happy to speak to anybody about that because I have firsthand experience with it. Thank you for allowing me to make these remarks.
Would like to be nuts.
Jane McAlpine, one tower drive. And the great thing about speaking now is that a couple of the other speakers already touched upon some of the concerns I was going to share tonight. One being that each of the four housing strategies, I do believe, does deserve special attention in its own breakout and public audience. It's too much information to process in the short amount, short amount of time. But I am going to talk a little bit more about the, some of my concerns also about the floating zone and whether or not it does apply to, as Ms. Barnett alluded to, homes that are already in current inventory. So there's an expectation that when you purchase a home in Simsbury, you purchase it within a certain zone, the expectation is it's going to stay that way. And how much, you know, using your imagination, what would happen in the future if neighbors do decide, it says right here, enables a property owner to apply for approval of a housing development using the provisions of this section instead of the underlying zone. And this is taken from the twelve-two draft that's been circulated online. So I do think there's a matter of public trust here, protecting the rights of current property owners. I also am concerned that there may be an undue burden placed upon the homeowners who are within those zones that currently have clean water and public sewer. Those are the primarily, the homes that were built in the seventies, eighties, nineties, the R thirties, the R forties that are the predominant housing stock in town. The larger homes that are on the outskirts are eighties and above larger units. Those are not in public water and public sewer, so those would not be affected by some of these zoning regulation changes that I'm seeing. Meaning that there would be an equitable shouldering of the burden by the homeowners who live in those types of neighborhoods and zones right now, protecting the higher-value properties on the outskirts of town who don't have to rely on public water and public sewer. And those are really my main points. I just urge the committee to take more time to evaluate these very large changes, not only for us today, but obviously in the future. And I do have questions asked to if there have been studies done, and perhaps there have, and I just have missed them, how these type of changes have enrolled in other communities, what type of impact they have had, and also in terms of projected low, medium, and high numbers of additional housing units that you foresee could be brought online if these were implemented over, let's say, a ten-year period. What would, what would that look like? And what would the impact be on water quality? You know, you name it, all the other town services that we rely upon. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm going, I'm still writing. Is there anybody else going or done?
It's all yours.
Getting my chicken scratch. Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from fifteen Oakhurst Road. I echo the sentiments that these are lots of changes all rolled into one, and I really do think they each should be considered of their own merit. It's a whole lot to talk about all of this all at the same time. Between the last meeting and this meeting, I was giving some thought to what was said, what was discussed by the members of public, what was discussed by the commission, and I gave some thought to what is zoning for? Why do we even have it? Why don't, you know, I, in many ways, I agree with what Tucker said about limited government and us being allowed to do what we want to do on our own properties. But the reality is that zoning exists to protect individual rights. We should be allowed to do what we want to do on our own properties inasmuch as it does not impact our neighbors and the other residents of the town. But when their rights bump up against our rights is when zoning comes into play. And rather than making these decisions on individual parcels of land, one neighbor to another neighbor, zones have been created. One-acre zones, third of an acre lot zones, industrial zones, retail zones. And so, as some people have said, there's an expectation when you buy a parcel of land about what you can do with it. When you buy in a single-family residential neighborhood with one-acre lots, you expect that that neighborhood is going to stay that way. There are things that change, but they need to be changed and evaluated carefully in relation to what happens to the people around them and the parcels around them. So when you buy in your single-family residential neighborhood, or even if you buy on Hot Meadow Street or in an area where there's nearby industrial, you know going in, can they put a machine shop in my backyard? Is an Amazon warehouse going in next door? Or a three-story apartment building going to steal my sunshine? Or am I moving into a neighborhood of multifamily homes? What happens when we make broad-sweeping zoning changes is that there are unintended consequences. If I'm not mistaken, from what I've read, prior to 2014, I don't even think we had zoning that allowed apartments until we made some changes. And I'm not saying they weren't good changes because I actually think what took place was a good, positive thing, to allow the apartments behind mill rides. I think that is what opened the door to the apartments in town all over the place. And I think there are a lot of residents here who would agree that while that one location was great, many of the others that followed were not so desirable. So inasmuch as I was giving thought to these things, I was carefully evaluating the accessory dwelling unit concept. And there was a lot of conversation about whether there should or should not be hearings prior to allowing somebody to have an accessory dwelling unit. And I do think a hearing prevents, it causes people to think more about what it is they're going to put on their property. However, Josh said something that made me think. What he said is, this is not meant to be subjective. It's meant to be broad areas of zone, right? So you're not supposed to change one little parcel here or one little parcel there in the middle of a zone subjectively for one person because you feel bad because grandma needs to be able to move in and they don't have somewhere for grandma to go. And so I give a lot of credence to what he said as to the rules should be strict and maybe not subject to a public hearing. But then I started thinking, well, why would you have an accessory dwelling unit in a single-family residential area at all? What is an accessory dwelling unit? It's another residence on a CEO family property. It may be attached, it may be detached, but it's another property on a parcel that's only been zoned for once. So I started thinking about it, and I thought if grandma wants to move in, build a first-floor suite if you want to, with a bedroom and a bathroom, and even a sitting room if she wants one, but not a complete, separate accessory dwelling unit. That's what opened the door to rental properties being attached to single-family homes. And that's really contrary to the zoning that we have. So if I was going to say anything, I'd say, go with Josh, make the guidelines, make them strict, and go back to what the original zoning was, and stop inserting accessory dwelling units or opening the floodgates to every single-family house becoming a two-family. Because when we all moved into single-family neighborhoods, if we live in those, that's what we expected to stay there. I also just wanted to touch on the multi, the smaller lot sizes and where they could go. The real concern is not whether there's smaller lots allowed some places in town. The concern is, where are they? People that live around them need to know where they might be. What if Westminster decides to use some of its land to put in a whole bunch of a hundred homes behind Westminster Cardaway? Is that really what we want to open the door to? Many, if not most, of the developments on small lots that you think of, like Pond Place in Avon, or Dire Farms in Canton, or Hazel Meadow in Simsbury, many of them are in planned unit developments with HOAs, homeowners associations. And there's a real relevance to that. I'm not a big fan of HOAs for me. I don't know that I want, would want to live in one. But when you're on teeny-tiny lots with neighbors very close, some very specific regulations need to take place for everybody's rights to be respected. And my question is, if we have this in this town without homeowners associations and not PUDs, then who is going to make sure that everybody's sort of following those rules in there? Is this all now going through our planning and zoning department? And Josh has to go out and tell people that they've got to take their swing sets down and fix up their yards and, you know, it's not fair to the next-door neighbor what they're doing with the lights that are on all night long and the parties they're having right next door? Or should they only be allowed with HOAs as a, as a PUD sort of situation? Thank you.
Do I, anyone else?
My name is Ellen Gilbert. I live at one twenty-six Hot Meadow Street, Unit three E. That's Telkot Acres condo association. I spoke last time, and I concur with the things that I said back then, with what Chris had said. One thing that came to my mind when I was here, and I've heard it mentioned, and I'm, I'm going to speak it as, as a concern that I still have, is with the R eight, I have a concern that if you have a two-family home on an R eight and you have single-family homes on either side. So there, I, I know of a situation where there is a piece of property that is for sale, and there are single-family homes on either side. And one of the property owners wants to sell this piece that is, is wooded right now, but they want, they want to sell this piece of property. The, that person plus the person on the other side, what's going to protect them from somebody buying that and making it an, getting it to be an R eight? We wouldn't, without a public hearing, without those neighbors having any choice? That, that doesn't seem right. It doesn't seem safe for the values that, that we buy our, our homes and with what we expect from, from Simsbury to continue to be. And I, over these couple of weeks, it's like, I, I'm, what Lori said about moving to Simsbury, and why move to Simsbury to change Simsbury? No, we move Simsbury, we move to Simsbury because we love it, and there are things that we need to do to be able to keep the parts that we love. Thanks.
Okay, how about the question notes? Comments?
Chair, I would, I would like to propose that we extend the public hearing into January. You know that, I mean, not everybody here is speaking, but there's clearly a lot of interest. This couldn't be a worse night for everybody to have to come out. It's cold, it's raining, it's a week from Christmas. I think even if it's just in, in, in the, you know, in the spirit of transparency, I think we want to show everyone, we, you know, we really want to hear everybody's opinions. We want to give them the opportunity after the holiday, when things are a little bit quieter, give them a chance to come back and see if there's anybody else who wants to speak. So I would propose we continue the public hearing through the January meeting.
How about if we reconcile this right now, or before we move any further with questions and dialogue? Does anybody else have any thoughts on extending?
Yeah, I completely agree.
I do too.
Is January enough, or should we add some to dates in February and March?
No, I would say one more public hearing, and then we'll see where we are.
We had, we had the one, this is like a half a one because of the timeline. Another full one gives us, you know, a solid two and a half, it seems.
We'd say at least one more in the end, as I said, you know, we'll see where we are.
I agree, yeah.
Josh, what do you think, Emily?
Yeah, I, I don't think we need anymore, but I also don't want to make people feel like we're pushing it through, you know, during holidays. So I think it's a good idea to give people a chance after holidays.
Second meeting in January, right now do the first meeting in January? The first meeting is January third, isn't it?
Six. Second.
Second is the twenty-second.
I don't say, it's not publishing. I think the second is a Wednesday.
Second is the twenty-second.
Yes.
I think we move it to Wednesday because of Martin Luther King Day.
It's been on my computer. That's why I brought it.
Good thinking.
Yeah, twenty, uh, so you, you, two meeting dates in January are, are, are Jan. sixth and Jan. twenty-two.
We talked about January twenty-second at the last meeting. Yeah.
And just note, note, it's a Wednesday night.
Well, Diane, you're making a motion. You want to make a motion.
Yeah, just make a motion.
The first meeting in January or the second meeting in January or both of them, or what do you think?
I guess I'm gonna, I mean, I, the sixth seems a little close after the holidays. So I'm gonna say, what the heck, let's go to the twenty-second.
The public hearing at both of those dates or just the public hearing on the twenty-second?
It would be a regular meeting.
So I would, I would just, if I could just interrupt, I would, because it, because we're in the middle of a public hearing, I would, I would, I would do a formal motion to continue the public hearing to your regular meeting on January twenty-second, so.
Okay.
And so we're not going to have a motion that has anything to do with January sixth. Okay.
That's fine, January, so I, I.
Diane has made a motion that we have to extend the public hearing to continue on January twenty-second in this room at seven o'clock. We need a second for that motion. Second, any further discussion?
Quick question, Tucker, will you be back on the twenty-second?
I won't, so if you could potentially not vote that day and just finish the public hearing, I can certainly catch up on, with the video. I appreciate your concern, though.
Okay.
Any others? Then we're ready for a vote on having a further continuation. On favor, say aye please. And those opposed, do you mean? That motion passes six-zero, so we're all set. So in terms of further comments about tonight's meeting, did anybody want to add anything at this point? Kate, you look like you have something to say.
There was a question about why, what number of people. I was just saying, we have two alternates who are voting right now, and there's probably more of us, six, or six of us that were voting.
We are, sure, we're an alternate, but, uh, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
May I say something?
Sure, you can call me Bruce.
Sometimes I do, sometimes, you know, to mix it up.
I'm just wondering. I'm just wondering.
Um, um, I, I just, I wasn't, I was going to not say anything, but then I felt compelled to say something because, um, you know, uh, we're listening to a lot of the reasons why people move to Simsbury. But I, I think it's also important that we move, we move to Simsbury and we stay in Simsbury because of the community that Simsbury is. And that part of that community includes helping our neighbors and being considerate of our neighbors and compassionate to our neighbors' needs. Um, and maybe thinking outside of the box for what they want. And, um, call it social engineering, I disagree with that wholeheartedly. However, um, I think that is one of the things that makes Simsbury strong, is their sense of community. And, um, I think we have the opportunity to continue to build that here. And so I just wanted to make note of it.
Something, are you all set, Shannon? I'm set. Um, so I'm wondering if at our next meeting, um, it's come up a lot in the public hearings, uh, where are these things? There's a lot of assumptions about how this rolls out. Does it hap, do, does like the R8 zone happen on somebody's lot in the middle of a residential neighborhood where now there's gonna be four houses where there was one? That seems to, that topic of like, where are these things and how does it play out? Seems to be coming up a lot and I think it could be useful, depending on what we have on the listings for our January 6th meeting, if we sort of like looked at a map as a group and kind of went through that so that we all really understand what the consequences are and exactly where these things can play out and how it, how it are, do we need to label zones? Uh, can it be applied to any property? I'm not sure that I'm completely clear on that at this point in time and I just think like, kind of looking at all of those aspects would be helpful, at least to me, in understanding people's concerns. Does anybody else feel that way?
Oh, yeah, I completely agree. Yeah, I think that'd be really helpful.
So, um, be- because you want that discussion part of the public record, it's part of the public hearing, I, I would suggest you, you either do it on a night you're have, I, I, I wouldn't do it on January 6th, cuz it's, uh, you've already extended the public hearing to, to Jan. 22. I think you can do it kind of post, once you close the public hearing and have work sessions on it, but I would just be careful how, how and when you receive information for which you're gonna make a decision on.
Well, can you have the information for us on the twenty second?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
But wait a second, hold it, hold it, hold it.
Right, yeah, I guess, I feel like, I feel like it would be useful for us to be able to, maybe we're not allowed, is what you're telling me, but it'd be helpful for us to see it and then maybe we could put, we could discuss and then put for, for the January 22nd. I guess, maybe just like preparing.
You've got the wrong idea about what's ahead.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a litany of things to discuss.
Yeah.
And, and that, we're not gonna finish it in one night.
No, no.
So I think you can, let me, I, I think you can ask staff to provide information, for sure. Um, but you are still under public hearing, I would be careful about having too much of a conversation about topical issues, cuz you, you still wanna hear from the public before you start going in a direction.
Okay.
You don't wanna go in a direction, if you're still gonna have your open, uh, uh, you keep yourself open to the public hearing. And you can, you can ask staff for an explanation on Jan. 22.
Right.
Okay.
For instance.
I have a, a, a quick question, hopefully it's not too much, um. So I just wanna make sure, I'm under the impression that if we were to adopt the R8 zone, it would not go anywhere right now. Any, at any point in the future where we decided to zone something at R8, that would need a public hearing, correct?
So, think of the R8 as any of your other standard zoning districts. Besides lot size, it's no different than an R15, or an R40, or an R80, or an R160. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a standard zone. So if somebody wanted to rezone X property to an R8, they would be required to file a petition, an application. Um, a public hearing would be held, adjacent property owners would be notified, and a sign would be placed on the property. So it absolutely would require a bona fide public hearing. As part of that public hearing, when we talk about kind of locationally, y- you would review compatibility, conformance with the P O C D, whether it's the right location to, to do this change, does it meet kind of the overall compatibility of, of an area or a zoning scheme? Is it, uh, is it a standalone zone, is it spot zoning? Is it, so you, it would be, you have a full public process to review, just like you would if you're rezoning something to R15 or rezoning something to PAD, or rezone, rezoning something to B1, Business 1. It's literally no, no difference.
It would have a public hearing?
A hundred percent, yes.
It would not be subject to staff review only?
Absolutely not. The zones, the zone change is fundamentally your duty as zoning commission, as, as your legislative role to, 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 to review and decide.
The, the thing that's as of right on it is, within the R8 zone, if it were to pass, you could put a duplex on there as a right. But to change it initially to R8 would require a public hearing.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, a little more clarification though. As of right, it's based on the presumption that the proposal passes muster with our regulations.
Yes.
If it meets our regulation, then you have a right to
Yep.
go ahead with your plan.
Yep.
But if it doesn't meet our regulation, then you don't go ahead with our plans, so. Our, our, by right is a, you know, it needs some consideration when you hear that. It doesn't mean that people get automatic entitlement to build whatever, or whatever their proposal is. It's subject to review, whether it's by the commission or by our staff. By right doesn't take force until you actually present a plan that passes clients with their regulations. So, other comments or concerns?
Why not just, uh, make one observation? Our staff told us that since twenty twenty, since 2002, when ADUs were approved, initially in town, we've had a total of forty-five approved. That's two a year. So the notion that somehow any changes we make to the ADU review process is gonna lead to floodgate, ADUs is inconsistent with the evidence we have.
Although, I would be curious, how many have happened? Like, did, did we have one in 2005 and then we had forty-four? You know what I mean, like, like what was the?
Fairly consistent over the twenty years, actually. And I, we've got a, a chart happy to provide.
No, fine, just you.
I'd like to say just, uh, the reason I wanted to confirm that was because I've, I've heard a lot of talk about concerns over where the R8 zone would be going. But up until now, and we still have another, another day for hearing, so I don't wanna say definitively, but I have not heard anything substantial against the concept of an R8 in its entirety. We've heard concerns over where it goes. But in my mind, that is a subject for a potential future hearing that isn't relevant to whether it exists at all or not.
Yeah. So since I have everybody here, um, I know this is your meeting, but I did provide you with a map. And just to take a step back, when the P O C D was developed, the P O C D includes a map and a description of housing opportunity areas. And that is in blue in the map that you see. Just, just for reference, you can also see in red essentially our limits of, 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 of public sewer. And so, the, the P O C D says that, essentially says by policy, the area encapsulated by the housing opportunity area are the areas we should be providing a diversity and mix of housing choices. So it is not necessarily suggesting that you can do an R8, um, you know, anywhere in the community. Because I, I think someone can, can ask to be rezoned to an R8 anywhere in the community, just like anybody can always petition to request anything. It's, 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 it's under our rules. But by and large, the policy would suggest that an R8 should be focused on areas with public water and sewer and in areas that, um, i- 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 if you kinda think geographically, it's hard, I can walk you through with a bigger map, but it's essentially our main corridors, that's the Hot Meadow Street corridor, that's Tariffill, uh, you know, and, you know, the Canton-Avon Route 44 area. So, you know, by and large, that's, that's the area where we, where we encourage density, think of it that way. I don't know if that helps Kate at all, but that's.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's all, it's all infill too, it's all previously developed. It's mostly just concrete at this point, in certain cases.
Yep.
Meeting housing needs on existing development means you don't have to meet your housing needs in open space. So you can increase your housing and not, uh, uh, and not reduce your open space. Great system.
ADUs. So they, they were actually, there's two things about ADUs. One is, it's on our agenda because the P O C D and good sense has told us that there are barriers to some, in the, in the minds of some folks, based on their experience dealing with the point of zoning commission, that prevent them from feeling more at ease, um, or comfortable with the processes we have in place. So we're encouraged by the P O C D to look for opportunities to reduce that level of discomfort or barriers, to make it easier for people to apply for things and to deal with the zoning commission. So, we read it, we hear it, we know it. And so, this thing with public hearings is an issue. People feel reluctant, they don't feel comfortable coming down and the preparation process, the investments of time and money, and also feeling at risk. And so, um, it's widely, I mean, we're not making this up, it's, it's not a universal practice to require certain decisions, the way we do, and this is one of them. So, um, you know, time will tell, we have more input, we have more discussion about this. But the other thing is that, as there's need for, I mean, it's a, it's an American dilemma that there is a increase in housing shortage. And in Simsbury, we need more opportunity to, um, lower-priced housing, availability for lower-priced housing. And, uh, as many communities are turning to ADUs, it's one way to do it. You can provide what may feel like an apartment or looks like, it is essentially a rental unit. If it's a smaller-scale rental unit, it's more affordable for people at lower earnings levels. But, uh, you know, it's, it's, as Tony was pointing out with, you look at the numbers of ADUs over the years, um, an average of two a year over the last twenty years, give or take. It's not likely to turn into forty-two a year or a hundred and two a year. There could be more, and, and many people will think of that as a good thing, but, uh, not everybody. It's like any change in the zoning regulations, not everybody likes it. So.
That's a.
Yeah, but Bruce, I would challenge that. If there's only two a year, then why not have a public hearing? It's not a burden.
They always get approved, why have it?
It's not the burden for us that we're concerned about.
To have the discussion.
Jackie, you're not hearing me. It's not the burden for us, it's the burden for the taxpayer who's looking to get a change in the budget.
They have to present their application to the town anyway.
That's true, they do.
Yeah, but they don't have to face, uh, they don't have to face potentially quite hostile, uh, community.
But like you said, they get approved.
Well, they have, certainly they have.
It's just awareness, it's just a public hearing.
We'll see how we all feel on a day in the future. And between now and then, we'll get more input, potentially others, members of the public enlighten us with some further thoughts. But we're not gonna vote on it tonight.
No, are we adjourning?
No. Did anybody wanna raise anything else related to our conversation tonight?
Second.
Okay, well, then, uh, we had one more item, I don't know if, uh, George did you know? George.
I don't have an update for you, I don't have an update for you tonight.
I, I've been working on this all day.
Then, then, uh, probably consider adjourned, does somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll move, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Any comments or questions? On favor, say aye please.
Aye.
The meeting's adjourned.
Thank you for coming out on a awful night.